Thank you and welcome to today's meeting of the S and R Policy Committee. And I thank everyone for attending today and also for anybody tuning in for doing so. My name is councillor Terry Fox, I'm the Chair of this committee and leader of the council. The meeting today is open to the public, however, there are appendices, items 12 and 13 on the agenda that are not available to the public or press and because they contain exempt information. If members do wish to discuss this information, we will have to ask members of the public and press to kindly leave as soon as they're not here, we can't do that, so we'll just switch off the recording. We have received no questions or petitions from members of the public by the deadline. Can I please request that mobile telephones or other such equipment are switched to silence as not to disturb conduct the meeting? There's no fire test planned for today. If there is any emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff and the assembly point is Tudor Square. Can I now ask each member to introduce themselves as we go round, so I'll just kind of shout you out to ask members to introduce themselves then, officers, so I'll start with Richard.
Thank you, Terry. I'm Richard Williams, Member for Stamford and Ward and Chair of Communities, Parks and Leisure.
Thank you, Richard Martin.
Thank you, Chair. Martin Smith, councillor for Dornochley Ward and Chair of the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Martin. Shefai.
Chair, Echolsal Ward.
Thank you, Shefai. Joe.
Jonathan, councillor for Dornochley and Chair of Western Street Scene.
Thanks, Joe. Douglas.
Thanks, Douglas Johnson, City Ward, Chair of Housing.
Thank you, Douglas. Angela.
Angela, Member for Humhelen, Chair of Rail and Co-Chair of the Adulthood and Social Care.
Thank you. Brian.
Brian Lodge, Member for Burleigh Ward and Co-Chair of the Finance Subcommittee.
Thanks, Brian. Mick.
Mick Rooney, no longer IT challenged, and I'm councillor for Woodhouse and Co-Chair of the Education, Children and Families along with councillor Dondale. Thank you.
Thanks, Mick. Paul.
Good afternoon, night, I'm councillor Paul Wood, Member for the Woodhouse Ward.
Thank you, Paul. Just go with the officers, Scotty Craig.
Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
Thanks, Craig. Kate.
Kate Josephs, Chief Exec.
Sarah.
Sarah Bennett, Assistant Director of Legal and Governance.
Thank you, Sarah. James.
James Anderson, Director of Policy Performance and Communications.
Ryan Keyworth, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
And finally Eugene.
Eugene Walker, Executive Director of Resources.
Thanks, everybody, and thanks for... Is there any apologies for absence, Craig?
Yes, Chair, I've received apologies from councillor Julie Growcott.
Yes, and we send our heart warm thinking of Julie who was suffering with Covid at this point in time, so get well, so please, Julie. So, next item, exclusion of the public and press, as I've said, items 12 and 13 are on the agenda, and if we do want to ask questions, then we can ask members to indicate and we can stop the recordings. Next item is item four, declarations of interest.
Chair, you talked about item 12, and I've got the members' pack, and there's bits here, I know page 107 is restricted, but surely we could take, is there a chance we could take page 89 onwards, which clearly aren't restricted, because there is an item here that won't mind asking a question or passing a comment?
Of course, not a problem.
Yeah, if we can do it that way, yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just on that then, is there any declarations of interest? If there isn't any, thank you for that. Next is the minutes of the previous meeting. Can we approve these as a true record? They should be within your pack. Agreed? Thank you. Item six is public questions and petitions, we've got none received within the deadline. Item seven, retirement of staff, the report provides details of 12 members of staff who have recently retired from the council with over 20 years' service, it is due to this Strategy and Resources Committee to convey the council thanks for their work, extend its best wishes for the future along happy retirement, and requests that the appropriate extract of this committee resolution under common seal will be forward to them. Can we agree that? Thank you. Next item is item eight. Craig, you just want to raise a couple of issues on this.
Thank you, Chair. Page 35 of your agenda papers, you're presented with the latest version of the work programme for this committee. Committee are asked to approve the new additions to the work programme and any amendments, they're in appendix one, page 38, and you'll see there mainly new items for finance sub. So the committee are asked to consider if they've got any further additions to the work programme and to also note the referrals in section two, of which there is just one, and that's on page 36, Chair.
Thanks, Craig. Can I first of all just outline my personal dissatisfaction that we've got a delay to the report, that due to a combination of factors, this has meant that there are still some considerable way to go before we have a comprehensive set of actions, and I met a number of groups during the week, last week, for those groups to have input as well. So therefore, despite the best efforts of everyone involved, that will be coming on the 5th of December. And also, can I just ask to go on to the work programme with the agreement of members, is if we can ask for an update and a review from the TRC committee on the number of transport schemes that are going on around the city at this moment in time? It'd be good for them to report back to us as soon as possible on those schemes and the outcomes as they are outlaying at the moment, so. Can I just have agreements of that? Douglas, and then, shall I?
Sorry, just, if I meant specifically the transport schemes, that's fine, I just wanted to raise a separate point about one of the items on the work plan. It's okay to do that now. Just, on the grant aid programme, our members have asked that that should stay with the original committee, which was Parks and Leisure and Communities. I know it's proposed to move around a bit, so the proposal now is to move it from finance sub to this committee, but our view was that it should just stay with the committee that it actually lodges in, and my understanding is there's a bit of confusion, because on the original draft of the constitution, it wasn't arguably clear where it should go, but on the constitution, we actually adopted in July, the firm decision was made to put grant aid within that committee. So that's what I was asked to put forward.
Thanks, that. Well, I think on that, Douglas, if I can, we will be receiving the update from the governance committee that's going to be meeting in November as well, so it'd be good to take that within that report and ask the governance committee to have a look at that as well, because obviously they will be looking at what stays with committees, what doesn't stay with committees, what works, etcetera, so it'll be with interest to do that.
That makes a lot of sense, as long as it doesn't delay whatever decision needs to be made on grant aid, and I don't know the details of the decision and when it would normally be made, wouldn't want to delay it. It really is something possibly for the officers to check out about the appropriate place for at some point.
Thanks, and we'll raise that with CMT. Joe.
Sorry, Chair, thank you for letting me in. My understanding is that it is within the remit of this committee to decide where crosscutting issues are settled, and therefore we would be within our rights to agree that this item should remain with the communities, and I'd be quite happy to support councillor Johnson in deciding that.
Thanks, Joe, I just think that when we've got this review coming up just in a few weeks' time, I think for that discussion, what we should be doing is putting that in there, because there'll be a number of crosscutting things that will come, well, I'm already aware of a number that are spreading between committees and things.
Sorry, Chair, but I think this is a separate question, it's not a governance review question where things belong, it's a S and R decision where crosscutting issues are settled, you know, the governance question is that it's crosscutting, that's clear, it's within our rights to decide them here or to delegate them to one of the policy committees if we think that's appropriate, and I want to support the proposal that that sits with communities.
Thanks, Joe. I'll just bring Sarah in on this.
Thank you, Chair. I think the issue is not so much that this is crosscutting, although there are elements of it that are, it's the fact that there are specific reservations at the moment to this committee or finance sub as a subcommittee of it in relation to grant aid and the accepting of being an accountable body and awarding certain grants, so those are specific reservations in the constitution, so there are, as the leader said, questions about that that are going to go to governance committee, they've asked to see something on that, so we are looking at that, but at the moment, those are specific reservations, so I don't think it's something that can be moved to that committee at this time, Chair.
Thanks for that, Sarah. So just on that advice, Douglas, do you just want to come back on that?
Yeah, sorry, I don't doubt that advice is correct, except that that's a different issue, because this is grant aid, pay it out of the revenue budget, it's not asking to be an accountable body for something, so that was the point about this. That is the nature of the grant aid that comes out, I don't want to labour the point, because it doesn't really matter as long as the decision is made somewhere, but I was asked to raise this, and really it's just about making sure that committees don't have work taken off them if it does fall properly in there, and that's right to do, because otherwise we set a precedent for arguing about, you know, sort of territory war. The fact is that the constitution does say specifically that grant aid, including, sorry, the voluntary said including grant aid, explicitly mentions that within the remit of that particular committee that it was originally in. So, in short, my proposal is that on page 38, the line that relates to the grant aid programme, voluntary and community strategic partners, that is paid out of the revenue budget, is not moved from the finance sub to this committee as proposed, but is instead moved to the Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee. So that's my proposal, which I think Joe has seconded.
Thanks, Douglas. I wouldn't be one to take anything off any committee, in fact, I'd love to give more on that. I've got Richard.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, this has come up in committee both formally and informally, and there is a lot of concern, Douglas is right, amongst committee members of the CPL committee, that in effect this means that decisions we're taking are being re-decided potentially, there is potential for that, and I'd certainly would like to think that decisions taken in our committee are honoured and not run over again. Thank you.
I understand the issues, and this is not about trying to land grab or to redefine any decisions, but there is a line in the constitution that talks about a level of money that the decisions have to be made. I would say at this moment in time, rather than, yeah, we can speak to it on the CMT, we can do a deep dive with the financials and take some legal advice, I'd make something here that then we have to alter through legal advice, so if we can, just for now, if we pause that decision and we'll take it to the CMT next week, if that's okay with members, and then we can bring it back in the S and R. Mick.
Yeah, well, I think it might be helpful if we were to give an indication as to how we might want that discussion to go. I think, I'm sat here trying to understand what the issue is, and I can't think of a really sensible reason why grant aid shouldn't go into the communities, personally, because it seems an obvious thing to do, because we give that money to the voluntary sector, who then spend it on or distribute it to communities. So I'm a little puzzled as to what the argument is. If it's a technicality or a line in the constitution that doesn't allow that, then we need to change the constitution.
Exactly, and that's the issue, we haven't got that information in front of us as members, and if we've got to change that, then we'll change it. I'm not saying don't put it in communities, I'm saying we haven't got the information, and if there is a constitutional line that we've got to adjust, then let's adjust it. I'm not trying to say that it comes here in any shape or form, it can go wherever we feel necessary.
So I suppose what I'm saying is the recommendation from here should be change the constitution so that we can do that.
Douglas.
Just got the bit of the constitution, so within the constitution, within that committee is right, it says voluntary sector grants, including grant aid, it seems very definitive.
Thank you, Chair. You write, as a function, the team and the function that deals with that revenue budget does sit within that committee, but separately in the constitution, within the things specifically reserved to finance subcommittee, there is a line that says approving the payment of any grant or loan in excess of £50,000. That doesn't say that that's only where that money comes from externally, it says any payment of grant or loan in excess of £50,000. That means that this committee or finance subcommittee are the only committees that can take that type of decision. I appreciate that members may wish to change the constitution, that's absolutely something we can look at, but at the moment, that's what the constitution says, and I do appreciate councillor Johnson, the apparent contradiction with the allocation to the communities committee. I would say that oversight of that function, performance monitoring, would absolutely sit with the communities committee at the moment, but that award of grants in excess of £50,000 can't because of the other bits of the constitution.
Mick.
One final comment, Chair, I can see that you're getting slightly irritated by it.
He's not well.
Body language says everything. My feelings are the constitution should be an enabling document, not one that stops us from doing what we want to do within reason, so I think we've got a situation here that is stopping us doing something that we want to do, so therefore it should be changed.
Totally agree, Mick, I totally agree with Douglas and Joe, the only issue is we haven't got the information in front of us, and there's a process to get that. If we send a signal in principle of where we want this to land, I haven't got a problem, I haven't got a problem. Any member, any got a problem of sending that, we can discuss this at CMT, then fine, that's great. On the other issue of the TRC with the review, can I just see an agreement with that so we can send that down and ask that committee? Anybody against? Thank you, thanks ever so much. Anything else on the forward plan? That must have been the longest discussion, discussion I've ever had on a forward plan, but anyway, if there's any more, if not, thank you, thanks everybody, and thanks for raising that, Douglas. I think we're going to have many more of them discussions through the governance review, let me tell you. Anyway, thank you for that. Item nine, the Budget Monitoring and Financial Position Month Five, who's more than that, is that you, Ryan?
Thank you, Chair. So a short report on the Month Five Financial Monitoring Position, this is one of our major reports of the year, so just a quick update from me. The forecast overspend outturn for the council for the year is £20.7 million, as per the report, there haven't been any major movements since the Month Four report, which went in some detail to finance subcommittee more recently. So the report obviously shows you the committee positions, which as I said, haven't changed a great deal since the Month Four, and goes into a little bit of detail on the Strategy and Resources budget itself. Couple of things worth highlighting, the business change in information solutions, adverse variance, £1.3 million for the year, a good amount of that, not all of it, but a good amount of that will be dealt with by the current voluntary early retirement, voluntary severance scheme that's going on in respect of the work that's done in that area. Within legal and governance, the overspend is mainly due to staffing issues and the problems of recruiting staff interposts, so we're incurring high costs of legal services from using temporary agency staff, for example, and in the property portfolio, actually the major item in there is vacant space within the electric works building, and there's a proposal coming to, I think it's the finance subcommittee, very soon to alter the letting policy on that building, which should remove that as a problem in the medium term, so certainly for next year, most of the items on here are dealt with and they're all covered within the budget that we'll be talking about a little bit later on. Chair, there's a capital monitoring appendix that's also included, but I'd be happy to stop there and answer any questions that members have on any part of the report. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Any questions, comments? If not, can we accept that report? Thank you, thanks, everybody. On that issue, can we move to item 10, occupational provision, is that you, Mark? Do you want to introduce yourself in the report?
Good afternoon, Chair, good afternoon, colleagues. Here to introduce a report which is seeking our approval to re-pure our occupational health and employee assistance programme services. Due to the value of the cost of that contract over a four-year period, it requires the approval of this committee. In the relatively short report, it sets out the range of services which are both supportive and statutory that are provided by our occupational health service, and in addition, the services that are provided by an employee assistance programme, which grants our workforce access to 24/7 confidential support on a wide range of employment and non-employment related matters. I think it's worth saying that the occupational health service and the employee assistance programme are one part of the overall package of wellbeing and support that we put in place for our workforce, but they are a very important part, and in reaching the conclusion and to present a recommendation of re-purement of those services, we have worked through a range of different alternative options that may be available to us as an employer. I think that probably covers most of the key points in the report, but I'm happy to pause and take any questions, comments that comes.
Thanks, Mark. Any questions, comments on the report? Can we agree to those recommendations? Agreed? Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Next item is item 11, the Grant of Planning Obligation, contribution to SYMCA Football Services. Tom, is that you? Can you introduce yourself?
Thank you, Chair. I'm Tom Finnigan-Smith, I'm the Head of Strategic Transport Sustainability and Infrastructure of the City Council. Today's report covers the use of Section 106 funding that was granted as part of the planning permission for the Sheffield Ikea store. There is £395,000 that's been provided for upgrades to buses in the Tinsley area as part of the overall Section 106 agreement. Members of the committee will be very aware of the disruption in bus network over the last few years, there's been significant changes to services across the city, but certainly within and around the Tinsley area, and clearly the period through which we're dealing with Covid, there's been significant patronistic decline across the bus network. The services in the Tinsley area have changed quite significantly, and as a result, the proposal is to remit funding to the South Yorkshire MCA through a grant agreement, so that it is tied directly to support bus services in the Tinsley area over the next three years. Those will cover early morning services, evening services and Sunday services on the X1, X10 BRT services between Sheffield and Rotherham. There'll be a review of that position every six months and feedback to us in terms of the continuation and the use of that funding, but it's clear that at this point, services would not otherwise operate at those hours and through that period, so this is seen as an upgrade to the services in the area and an appropriate use of the funding. So the recommendation is therefore to remit the funding to SYMCA through a grant agreement. It's probably worth me highlighting at this point, if I may, that SYMCA and SYPTE are joint authority now, although they are still two legally separate entities, so within the transfer of the funding, it will go to SYPTE, albeit as part of, they're now part of the MCA, so where it reads SYMCA in the report, it will also need to read SYPTE for the purposes of the grant. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Tom, and thanks for that clarification. Mick.
Me again. I'm just trying to understand who the beneficiaries of this increase or preservation of the bus services will be. Those buses tend to go from town to Meadow Hall and then to central Rotherham, I believe, more or less, and I'm trying to work out who that benefits. It doesn't appear to benefit the people of Tinsley very much, it just seems to be another bus service or another pollutant that travels through the community without actually giving it much of a service, so I'm just, councillor Malamud knows the area probably better than I do, but it does seem to me that we ought to be trying to facilitate bus services that allow people to go across their community, which is quite often the most difficult part. Did that make any sense? I hope it did.
Happy to respond to that, Chair. I think your question made sense, councillor Reeney, I think the X1, X10 do serve the Tinsley community, as they come across from Meadow Hall by the Tinsley link, there is quite a well-used stop at that point, where a number of people from the Tinsley community get onto those services. The preservation, as it were, as you mentioned, of the early morning services, the evening services and the Sunday services, as opposed to the likelihood of a kind of a service being sustained by the funding that we have available, a different alternative service, it means that effectively the benefit of the X1, X10 operating at those hours is probably larger than trying to find a new service that wouldn't be sustained for a significant period of time. So in terms of the best use of the funding, this is what we consider to be the most appropriate use of the funding for this purpose.
Thanks, Tom. Marty.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the report, Tom. So this has been funded out of S106 money, and the last time I checked, there were quite a large number of old S106 agreements that had still not been spent. We're well aware of the problems with buses and funding, there's a couple of big changes in my ward that are causing significant concern, so are there any other old S106 agreements that could be used to support improvements to the current situation on buses? Thank you.
Thanks for the chair. In terms of direct Section 106 funding for bus services, I don't believe there are any others, I will take that away though, councillor Smith, and will confirm that, happy to feedback that back to the committee, there are a number of old Section 106 agreements, the enhancement or the upgrade to services in the Tinsley area is part of this Section 106. We did look at actual upgrades to the vehicles and the emission standards, because in part this is directly related to air quality. One of the reasons that we haven't done that is because we were successful as an authority in securing significant amount of money from government through the Clean Bus Technology Fund, so we didn't move that forward because it was already being funded, but in terms of other services across the city, I don't think there are any other Section 106 allocations, but I'll go away and double check that.
Yeah, just for clarity, Chair, I wasn't questioning whether there are any S106 agreements directly linked to bus services, but given that there are a large number of them and pots of money sort of sitting on a shelf doing nothing, can and there's a and there's a burning issue in communities, can we get creative within the rules and within the law to use them to, you know? It's not doing anything at the moment. That was the point Chair. Thank you.
Thank you Marty. Tom?
Thank you Chair. So councillor Smith, there are limitations, given that the legal agreement is quite, are usually quite specific in the heads of terms of what the funding can be used for. Again, in this example, it is very specific in relation to Tinsley, so it had to be directly related to those services. But I will go away and confirm that position.
Thank you. Thanks Tom. Shafak and then Brian.
Yeah, I just wondered whether I should have declared an interest because I live down there, but I think councillor Rooney is right that this bus service skirts past the very bottom of Tinsley near Ferrers Road and St Lawrence Road, whereas the previous bus services did go into the heart of the community going up Borthy Road, coming down St Lawrence Road. So I think councillor Rooney does have a point there in the sense, the way it's been badged as improving services in Tinsley, you could say improving services that skirt, you know, kind of just trying past Tinsley. But I would say, you know, for a balanced view that Tom, yeah, some people at the bottom end do use it, but if you lived at Ferrers Road at the top end, I'm not sure you would walk all the way down. But for me Chair, it's a positive that it is a bus service that serves Sheffield and Rotherham. And the more we can do to save any bus, well at least help, particularly with the Sunday service and the out of, kind of, the more early morning and late evenings, the better. Hence why I think, no doubt today, we'll be all supportive, even though, you know, I think councillor Rooney is right to question how many residents from Tinsley would actually be using these, whether you're able to provide that data would be useful, Tom.
You do realise you've said councillor Rooney's right three times.
I'm going to stop Anna.
Thank you. I'm sure that we can get loading kind of information, boarding and unloading information from SYPTE, SYMCA on that.
Thanks Tom. Brian?
Yeah, thanks Chair. If this money is going in to support those services that are going through there, if the PTE Combined Authority were looking to support those services anyway, because it's the early morning and evening that's for economic activity, if they're now doing that, can we sort of make representations to us and say, well, this money's coming in to support those services? Can we look at the other services in Tinsley and give additional support there? Because if we're moving this money across, there's almost like a commuted sum that they, if they were planning to use, they can use another service in the area. Is that feasible?
Chair, so the information we've had from discussions with MCA, PT colleagues is that these services wouldn't be running unless the the funding that is coming across as part of the section 106 were available. The MCA have had to take quite significant action recently to provide additional tendered services in response to decisions from the commercial operators to withdraw services. So part of the recent changes at the start of the month, in part because there's a number of replacement services that are now tendered by the MCA and funded by the MCA. Therefore, in this example, the funding won't offset already committed funding because we've been in discussions about this for some time now. But what the current position means is that there is additional funding from the public purse going into the bus market. And as a result, the kind of commitment here is that this will be sustained for three years. So there is a added benefit in terms of earmarking this funding for these services for that period of time, which, given the significant amount of additional funding going into the bus network at the moment, that will be, there will be a need to review that because clearly we're having to respond to some quite acute commercial decisions at the moment and the MCR reviewing that. And clearly part of the sustainability of those services relates to the amount of funding that they require.
If I may Chair, cynic in me, were they aware of this funding? Because it's sort of brinkmanship, isn't it, that the 15th of October, we've got to move it across or it goes back to Ikea. Does that help them in their decision about not supporting those services? That's probably a rhetorical question. It just seems convenient, shall we say.
So Chair, our understanding is that that isn't the position that as part of the network planning for service changes at the start of the month, there was a full suite of potential impacts and this was highlighted as one of them.
Thanks and I'll set that as a comment councillor. There we go. The recommendations on the report, can we agree to those recommendations? Agreed? Thank you. Can we, thanks Tom for that. Can we move on now to item 12, capital approvals? Damien, can you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Damien Watkinson. I'm the Finance Manager in the Capital Team. Here to present the amendments and changes to the capital budget proposed for this month. And I apologise, I lost my voice, it's just coming back, so I sound a little strange and unusual today. As we refer to, there is a closed appendix, we shall not refer to at this point, but in the rest of the appendix one that's here, under transport regeneration and climate change, we've got the continuation of the role of the 20 mile an hour schemes. We've got several of those schemes come forward for approval and also further pedestrian improvements across the network, a couple of schemes there funded through the Road Safety Fund that was made available through the Community Infrastructure Levy and the Local Transport Plan Funding. Also, we've got the first stage of some feasibility works under the Leveling Up Fund, looking at some car park works at Attic Cliff that will allow changes to the other road network to take place, making parking more appropriate. But that's just the first stage of feasibility that's coming forward on those. In the Community Parks and Leisure, last month we brought forward the main budget for Woodburn Road. Tenders for that scheme came back nearly £300,000 higher than expected. So we're bringing forward an increase in that budget, which has been funded from a provision that's been released as no longer required because the ongoing maintenance of that site will form part of an agreement with the National Football Trust that's going ahead. So the council will no longer be responsible for that long-term maintenance, so we're releasing a provision relating to that to allow us to hold the contract to finish those works. We're moving ahead with the Pass and Cross Hub works, so there's works to be done on the pavilion there. Part funding that was being received from the Rugby League as related to the World Cup. So we'll be improving the pavilion in Pass Cross Park, that's going to be phase one of some works, which is going to carry on when some football foundation funding is also received. And there'll be further upgrade works at that site. And then just a bit of change to works that are going on at Shirebrook Visitors Centre. We're using some funding that's time limited to achieve best value for it really. So we're changing the scope of the works to do some additional car parking works there to allow people better access to that site. And the toilet works will move on to a further phase to be funded through some public health funding later on. Under housing, we're purchasing some properties under the Cleedless Valley Master Plan in order to move that forward, securing our interest in that area to allow that major development to occur as time moves forward. We've also got two external wall installation schemes that have come for an increasing budget. So again, that's been through market pressures and also moving to the new PAS 2035 accreditation programme that's got to be in place for insulation measures now. Moving to this accreditation scheme allows us to apply for funding for some of those schemes and that's what's going to go ahead as well. So while we're increasing the budget currently from the HRA, we are going to be applying for grant funding from government to also support those schemes. And that's around 432 properties that will benefit from increased insulation measures and otherwise might actually, you know, fall out of the council's stock altogether because they need this work. And then finally, under education, we're just putting in our provision for a new free school that's going to be hopefully built in the, for SEND in the north of the city. It will be paid for and procured by the DFE as part of their building programme. But as a council, we provide the land and we agree to meet the cost of any abnormals that might be on site, so sort of ground conditions etcetera. It's going to be a joint bid with Barnsley. We expect that, we've estimated abnormals at 1.2 million and our contribution to that will be 600,000 to come from the high needs capital allocation we get from government. There's just a reprofiling of the work to Silverdale School to expand that. That work's been undertaken by Corus Trust, so we're just reflecting their feedback to us now about how they want to draw that money down. But that means that they'll be drawing more of that money down next year rather than this year. And then on Brunswick School, that's been accepted into the primary rebuilding programme from central government. So we were going to undertake some remedial works there around fire compartmentalisation and also some renewal works. But as that is now going to be a whole new rebuilt school, we're just going to reinvest that funding that was going to be used for that in the other parts of the estate that aren't going to benefit from that. And they are the key items on there. Thank you.
Thanks Shafak.
Thank you Damien. Got a question. Oh, no worries. So my question is about page 89 on my pack anyway, it's about the Attic Cliff car parking feasibility. I welcome it, the investment, the improvements of car park. I mean, you talked about doing lighting barriers, fencing etcetera. I was disappointed when I visited, I think it was Zion Lane, they had electric vehicle charging points. They had a survey for Sheffield City Council logo on it. These EV charging units are not in operation at this time, sorry for the inconvenience. And then somebody seems to have hacked off the, the old charging cable thing. So I don't know if this is an issue that we can look at, because I'd want to encourage more electric charging points in Attic Cliff, particularly with its regeneration, having levelled up funding. And is this something we can take in addition to the improvements we're making to the lighting and servicing and gates? About how we can expand more EV points and deal with the issue here, what's happened?
Yeah, I know.
I don't know if Tom want to comment on that as well, I?
Well, I know we have to see.
Chair, I can give you the actual, there's a number here actually. ABBGB352, if that means anything to anyone.
Not to me.
It's a sticker on the machine.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I know we've got several electric vehicle charging point schemes going ahead through the Combined Authority as well. As part of the Leveling Up Fund, like I said, this is just like, there really is a first stage of some feasibility around these works. I'd expect that that's going to be looked at through, there's also Transport and Cities Fund works going on there. So I know that, you know, that'll be reviewed in the round, but I'll, we'll have more detail when they come back with the outline business case of what they've identified they're going to do on these sites, but obviously I can feed that back to the team, those comments.
Yeah, if you can about EV points in particular. I mean, this might be just a bit of vandalism or something, I don't know. But I think the fact that we want to increase more EV points, these car parks, particularly the types of industry they want to attract down the Attic Cliff now from the old historic smog, steelworks that, you know, the likes of my father and grandfather came here to work in.
Yeah, and I know that's certainly the intention of the Leveling Up Fund in that area is to lift that public realm as well as, you know, investment in the other areas that are coming in there.
Thank you. Thanks for that. Got Richard and Joe?
Thank you Chair. It's really to do with Woodburn Road Football Hub. It's not surprising that when, in this day and age, when you put things out of tender, the costs go up. That seems to be the world we're living in at the moment. I mean, I think the exciting thing about this is we're going to end up with a world-class facility with £2.4 million worth of external funding, if you add the figures together. So I think this is, this is an excellent thing for Sheffield and I look forward to it being built.
Say that as a comment. Thank you. Richard, Joe?
Thanks Chair. Before I go into the one I was to query, just to add to Shafak's points on the EV charging things. The maintenance of the EV charging is under Wasteland Street scene, but clearly if machines are being vandalised and they're in kind of insecure locations, they, it's going to be a maintenance challenge. And I appreciate that we've had an issue with our maintenance contractor lately that kind of were working on a replacement for that. So there has been a maintenance backlog, which we're aware of and we're working on. But can I ask Transport, because we're responsible for maintenance in Wasteland Street, so we're not responsible for the installations and the choices of where to put them, so can I ask Transport and Mayoral colleagues to think about, when they're installing electric charging, to think about the kind of the security of the location so that, you know, that we have a greater chance of the machines being operational, which is obviously what we all want. And clearly, if, you know, if they contain metals that people might like to steal or something, then security is going to be an issue. Because, you know, for a few pounds worth of metal, we're losing an asset for the city that's worth many times more than that and doing great, do good for the environment. So please take that comment away. I wanted to ask about the housing project on page 100. I'm just a little bit concerned, but because looking at the numbers, the actual work does seem to have slipped from this financial year, kind of back a year and into the following year. Given that we're in a cost of living crisis and this is insulation work, that's really quite disappointing. Because, you know, the sooner that the houses can be insulated, the sooner we can, you know, reduce the bills for people that might be struggling to pay them. I mean, yeah, is it, how did this happen? Is anything that can be done just to speed all this up a little bit?
As far as I'm aware, these schemes have been running for a while, but it was, they've had difficulties in specifying the works. Partly because of, in some cases, in quite a few cases actually where property had been adapted past, tenants had had it on outhouses or lean-tos and other structures that meant that rather than having just one design, you know, there was an awful lot of design required to go out to that. And I believe they went out to tender ones and responses were insufficient. Then we've had changes in legislation and it is unfortunate. It's just been a series of issues that have been faced around it. And, you know, but you're getting access to properties for survey even, you know, is always, it's always difficult sometimes for the housing teams. But I think at last we've seen some, you know, a figure out that we can go out to tender on and hopefully this will move forward. But yeah, I can certainly ask the housing team to pull more detail together on, you know, how it's, it has to take a long time to get here. But I know they face significant challenges in getting there.
Sorry, I mean, I appreciate it. We haven't, we've gone out to tender, but we've not awarded a tender on this. Because, I mean, we've already spent £400,000 last year and we're spending £400,000 this year. And we still don't have a, I mean, maybe I'm just going to explain my evidence of how these things work. I'm hoping that that spend has done some of the work in planning the works and isn't just kind of, you know, the value's been achieved for that.
Yeah, I mean largely that's our capital delivery service team working on it. Like I say, we've got 432 properties here and it's £20 odd million worth of investment in total. So actually that's going to be, you know, as a proportion of the value of the eventual construction works. And that's all what we'd expect in this sort of, you know, this level of work and the large amount of, I say, redesign and design that's gone into it. But I can get a further, I can get a further report from, sorry, Capital Delivery Service on that, if that's what you'd like, councillor.
Thanks Joe. Just to comment on the area homes as a, I just so welcome this report. We've worked very hard and tirelessly, certainly last year, we put extra money in to the external insulation of properties. My understanding is because of the area homes and the different types of homes that are up there, certainly around the area, that this is going to be most welcome, taking councillor Otten's point of view about, obviously this is the cost of living and the prices etcetera. I mean, this is a real good news story in respect. What we need is everybody on the front foot to get that delivery. We've invested, I think there's over £50 odd million we've invested in bringing our stock up to EPCC levels. And I think we need to be on top of that. It may be, and I'm looking at councillor Otten, it may be that we get a report from the Housing Committee and where we are on this work. the housing committee and where we are on this work, and highlight the major issues or hurdles that we need to get over, but also the success stories, because there's a lot of success stories out there. And I see councillor Johnson nodding on that, so I think if we can ask the committee to bring that back. Just going back to Joe's point, while we are talking about giving committees work, it may be that the Wasteland Street scene may want to up within that about the issue with the EV charging scenario and how we can link that up within internally with the council relationships with the MCA as well. So thanks for that, and thanks for the report, Damon. If there's no more comments, can we agree those recommendations? Thank you. Thanks very much, Damon. Next item is the policy committee budget proposals. Is that Ryan?
Thank you, Chair. What I'm going to propose to do is to give you an overview of the main report that is in the public domain part of the open session, and I'll take any questions if I can chair on that open part of the report, but if there are questions that stray into the confidential appendices, I'll perhaps indicate to you, Chair, that I think we need to defer that question until the closed session. Okay, so this is a key stage in the budget process that we first discussed at this committee on the 31st of May and reiterated on the 5th of July. At this stage in the year, there's been some fantastic, some excellent work and progress done by policy committees and officers supporting them in finding and mitigating savings, but there is still a gap, as the report says, of about £19.6 million. The report sets out that not all committees have been able to balance their budget pressures, as was the original ask, and that there are some reasons included in the report for that. The medium term financial analysis assumptions, which we also brought to this committee on the 5th of July, I still think they hold. At the time, I would have said that they were prudent, I am now more of the opinion that they're realistic. And that's even in the current financial climate, you know, we had assumed that we were going to generate additional income through some modest rises in council tax and other income, and that that essentially would remove the reliance on reserves that the 22, 23 budget has. I'm very pleased we took a prudent approach at the time. I think we'd be in a very difficult place if we had to make the challenge even harder today than it was back in the summer. On reserves, it's clear from the report, I hope, that the council doesn't have the level of reserves required to mitigate the gap in the current proposals or to continue on the current path of using reserves to finance the revenue budget. Energy costs clearly pose a significant risk to the council, as they do to our citizens and businesses. The government support that we've had so far provides respite to a certain extent to citizens, protects them from price increases, and it does that for two years. For businesses and councils, that support runs out in March currently. The effect of the price cap on the unit price of electricity for this council has been almost no effect. We'd actually fixed the price of electricity at more or less the same level as the price cap previously, so the effect in this financial year of that price cap is minimal. But if the price cap does get lifted for councils as of 1st of April, we will see more or less a doubling in the cost of our energy. Doubling means an additional £15 million, of which about eight, the pressure of about eight of that is included in the budget so far, so we'd need to find roughly another eight. So what I'm proposing as part of this report is a contingent use of another £5 million of reserves, so over and above the 70 that we've already earmarked, against the risk that energy prices rise next year. There are some other measures included in the report that will also mitigate the remaining £2 or £3 million of that likely cost impact. Just turning briefly to housing, the housing revenue account has a significant budget pressure in addition to the general fund of about £21 million. That number depends on the decisions that are made about the housing rent settlement. A detailed report's been presented to the housing committee, but that's like I said, the final decisions required there will depend on the government's rent setting, but I thought it's just important to note that for the committee. The Strategy and Resources Committee, in addition to its overall or overview of the council, does also have its own budget to balance. The Strategy and Resources Committee pressures consist of two slightly different things. One are corporate pressures, and the other are specific committee pressures for services like resources, the service that I'm part of. The corporate pressures we've balanced, and that's largely equating the, removing the use of reserves and using the council tax increase and so on, assumption to balance those two things off. And we've done quite a lot of work and are almost there on balancing the committee specific pressures, I happily talk about those perhaps in the closed session. There is a small gap still to fill, and as officers, we're still working on suggestions for that. In terms of next steps, we may very well need to take a cross council approach to complete the process of balancing the budget, as officers were doing work to try and identify options for that, and we'll certainly be bringing those forward to members as soon as we're in a position to do so. There might also be the opportunity to implement some budget savings early, and officers have been asked to come to policy committees with suggestions for proposals that we think might be able to be implemented early. I mentioned in the budget monitoring section about the letting policy for the Electric Works Building, for example, that's a decision that can be readily taken, and there's some criteria set out in the report. These are my suggestions as to the sort of things that we might look to implement early if the things on that list, you know, are true. The timetable to Strategy and Resources on the 5th of December does remain tight, but we remain more or less on it, which is a fantastic testament to the people who've been working very hard on this. But it is critical that we stick to that timetable if we're to successfully complete the process. Chair, I think that's all I want to say on the public section of the report, and happy to take questions so far.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there any questions on this section? If not, thanks, Ryan. Can we note those reports in the open session? Thank you. I think the question is then, do we need any questions in the, for a closed session? Is anything else on the other papers? If not, okay, we'll go straight on then to next item, item 14, which is the minutes of the urgency subcommittee. Can we agree those? All of those agree? Thank you. Thanks, everybody, and thanks, everybody, for today's meeting. I look forward to catching up, surely. See you soon. Bye.